And committees, so we can start fresh and begin our new term. So the first one up is the election of the chairperson. I will say right now that I would love to continue as your chairperson, but it really is up to everybody. And so hold on, I paused our backup recording. And I want to make sure that's on, okay. So can we take some motions for who you would like to nominate for chair?
I would like to make a motion to have Cindy continue as chair.
Do we have a second?
A second that.
Okay, are there any other people who need to be nominated for chair? Okay, so let's take a roll call vote.
Mary Goldstein, I.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Lori?
All right, Garcia, I.
And Cindy Krasinski, I, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Cindy.
To not hold you, Barbara, do you want to do the swearing in now?
Sure, and I think the only one I swear in is you, I believe.
Right, correct.
All right, raise your right hand. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Cindy Krasinski, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform the duties.
Discharge and perform the duties.
Of school committee chair.
Of school committee chair.
According to the best of my knowledge and abilities.
According to the best of my knowledge and abilities.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States of America.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States of America.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the city of East Hampton.
And the city of East Hampton.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody. Thank you.
All right, bye bye.
So, the next thing is that we have to elect a secretary. And I'm going, I really, I believe that it should be someone who's already been a school committee member. The reason is, if ever I can't attend a meeting, the secretary would take over that position. So we want someone who feels pretty comfortable with that. And the position involves reading the correspondence and presenting it in the minutes. So there's a lot of work to do. Do we have someone to be nominated?
Cindy, I think it might be important to not limit it to, you know, previous committee members. I think it's also an opportunity for somebody who wants to get more experience to be stepping into sort of seeing a little bit more of what's going on and be more involved. So I think I wouldn't necessarily say we need to limit it to the three of us who've been here.
I agree. I said, so that's, I mean, it's certainly not a rule. We can open it to anybody. Is, let me ask it in a different way right now. But there is a comfort period, and that's, that's my concern. Usually, people stay for like a term and feel really comfortable after that taking another position. That's just been the history of how people have, you know, signed up for this. Is there anybody interested in being secretary? Somebody needs to.
My internet is so unstable right now. I just got a message of all times. It's like really weird. Can you, you guys can hear me, right?
Yep.
Okay, because everyone keeps on going like underwater to me. Maybe I should shut off the camera, which I normally don't have to do. So, it's not something that I'm eager to do, but I would do if necessary. So I'll just say that. Okay, if anyone else is eager, you step right on up. So that's.
Not doing policy, I'm telling you.
I don't, and I don't mind being on policy, but I don't want to take over doing that whole book. I, you know how I feel about, about that. So I'm happy to contribute to policy and still go to those meetings when we're not like over inundated, but we're, we're right now, we're at the secretary position, so.
So let's figure out the secretary position. So Lori said she's willing to. Is there anybody else who's willing or interested in just dying to do this?
I wouldn't say I'm dying to do it, but I also am willing to step up and learn. This is what Marissa did. Is that correct? Okay.
Yes.
But I absolutely will defer to Lori, and even if Lori's not dying to do it, just the judgment of like, perhaps we need somebody. Cindy, as you were saying, that like has done this before, so I'm flexible.
So can we make a motion? Somebody make that motion, either Lori or Megan, and figure out what we want to do. My, you know, my only reason why I said, you know, it, there's a real comfort that it's a curve. And the first year is really hard as a new committee member. So that was why I was encouraging it to be someone who's done it multiple, you know, more than two minutes. I don't know how long you've been sworn in, maybe half hour. You know, just your first meeting is, is, is an adventure, so.
Somebody want to make a motion? Miren, it's usually you who makes those motions.
Well, I mean, I guess that what I would say is, I mean, I know, obviously Lori, I know how worked you've been.
Over the last year, you know, number of years, it sounds like to me if, I would support, I would support somebody new coming into this role. I think it's something that they can learn. I think if Megan is interested in it, I would certainly support her taking that on and being a part of that and learning, you know, on a faster curve, but we're all here to support. So it's not like it's a role that suddenly we would, you know, say, oh, well, you got to know better. You're not going to be able to do that role well. So I think that we can, you know, encourage Megan to step into a new role and be a part of a, a part of the team. So we've, we already have a lot of our own roles that we sort of take on. So I think if, you know, Megan wants to step into that space, I would certainly encourage that.
Would Megan be willing to step into the space of head of policy until Shannon comes back?
I don't know if we're quite there yet.
I think what, what Lori's saying is there's a lot of positions that we have to fill right now, so. I didn't think this was going to be so tough. Lori, you sounded like you were hesitant. I think that's what Miren's here.
Yeah.
Cindy, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Can you give us an overview of what positions we're deciding on today and like,
Yes.
who doing sort of what? And give us the whole landscape, because I, I don't know, it's like, should I jump in here or should I do wellness or like the COVID or like whatever?
That's a great idea. That's a great idea. Okay, so the secretary is the position that we're at right now. That is the ability to jump in and run a meeting if I can't be there. It is looking at the correspondence and paraphrasing and presenting that, doing the minutes, asking for approval of, of minutes and payroll. Then we have the election of the finance subcommittee members. We have policy committees and we have finance subcommittees, and we need a quorum for them. So it's not electing the chair of those committees, but we need to decide who's going to be on what subcommittee. Then we have need for a collaborative board member that is someone who becomes part of the collaboratives school board. There are 32 sending districts and East Hampton sends one member. And that is a once a month meeting. I think there's only 10 meetings a year, but it is once a month. Then we have wellness committee, the safety committee, and the school building committee members. So there's a lot of different little places for everybody to be.
And I would just throw in there just for a little bit of clarity, and I think the two biggest roles in terms of time, I mean, the biggest one is probably the collaborative, just in the sense that you're going to another, a whole nother group, you're reporting back on it. You know, Jonathan did that previously, so that's certainly a position that is very much open. It gives you a bigger, bigger perspective of what's going on across the Pioneer Valley and other districts and another sort of educational areas. And so that does, that gives you that sort of different view, if that's something that somebody's interested in. And then, yeah, we, we all fit into either a policy or finance, and then there are individual numbers you take on these, some of these other subcommittees too. So everybody will be in either a finance or subcommittee role and then potentially take on these other pieces, so.
And I think we should highlight as well that there's a difference between the COVID response and wellness, which I believe that we should start up again as wellness and keep COVID response separate. And I, and I think it's important before we actually do vote on secretary to understand all the different roles, because especially for people who are new, like, because, so that's something that I was thinking as well, because I'm very interested in knowing what's going on in other districts, because I have taught in so many other districts. And I've talked to Jonathan extensively about the collaborative role. And the one thing that concerns me about the collaborative role is having to go to Greenfield until nine o'clock at night every other month. And that's, that's the one drawback for me personally, because, you know, I'm up so early. So I don't know, Cindy, is it always necessary to, to go live to those Greenfield meetings? Late at night and stay that late?
When they're in person, then yes, they go, they go till nine or nine thirty. So before I was chair, I, I enjoyed being a collaborative member. But, you know, when, when you travel to Greenfield, it's a long night, but it's only once every other month. So I would just plan around it. The nice thing about the collaborative is that you would be doing all the different pieces. You learn a lot about how they run budgets and policies and new programs. So it's a, it's a very cool position to be in.
I just add that I think in looking at these positions, it may seem a little daunting right now, because currently in this meeting, you're down two members. You're down, you know, the mayor is not here to step forward to serve on any of the subcommittee. I don't know if she would or not. But then you also have a member out on medical leave. So I think that that's putting, you know, that's making it particularly challenging for the four of you that are on this call. And I think that might seem a little daunting for four people, is it five? I'm seeing four of you on my screen.
I'm including Cindy. But yeah, there's five of us.
Oh, yeah, five. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm not counting correctly. My fault. So I think it's a little daunting for the five of you to take on all of those roles. So I think that, you know, there may be some gaps in some of these committees that either, when our, when our person on medical leave comes back, they would assume a role on one of those committees, you know, that's open, or the mayor may, may want to be involved in one of those committees. I don't know.
I've never seen the mayor involved in any of the committees.
But that's often my.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think from the transition, I think that the three roles that are sort of open, most open right now, I mean, of course, we can shift however we want to shift things around, but the three roles are the secretary, the CES board member, since that was Jonathan, and like you mentioned Shannon being on medical leave. The person who goes on to, a, a person should, one of the people who's then voted on to the policy committee should see themselves also trying to step into the chair of the policy committee.
So what happens, what happens is, once we figure out who's on finance subcommittee and who's on policy at your first meeting, that's when you'll elect chair, your chair.
Right.
And, you know, we are going to be short for a little while, and two is a quorum. So we are okay if there's only two on a committee until, you know, until Shannon gets back. So I'm not too worried about that. I really think we can make it. And so, does that help about, I know we talked a little bit when I, when I spoke to Ben and Megan about the different positions. I think, you know, the collaborative is one, we have always sent a collaborative member. And that's an important one, but it is, it is a long haul every other month. But it is worth it, and it's really interesting to, and if it's on Zoom, and who knows with the crazy world that we have, my guess is the first few meetings are all going to be on, so that makes it a little easier. But, you know, it's, it's a neat, it's a neat board to be on. You learn a lot. So let's go back to secretary, because we've got to get past that. So.
I would ask Megan, was that helpful? If you, you'd put your name forward, are you still interested in then potentially being in that role?
Yeah, that's really helpful. I, I am willing to take that on. And the collaborative is something that I, I think with the three kids, I just can't commit to that, those meetings, the extra meetings. So if that helps sort of space us out in terms of doing things, you know, happy to go that route.
And Lori, I know you've been burning the candle at both ends, and you and I have talked about how, how much work we're doing. So does that feel more comfortable to have you not have that pressure of secretary?
I, I think Megan would do a wonderful job, and if she wants to assume that, I think that's great.
Yep.
Well, then I'll nominate Megan Harvey for secretary of the school committee.
And I'll second that.
Oh, good. All right, roll call. Here we go. Ben?
And Hershey, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I. Lori?
Laura Garcia, I.
Miren?
Mary Goldstein, I.
And Cindy Krasinski, I. Yay. All right, so our next one is election of finance subcommittee. And this is, you know, put your name forward if you want to be on it. And then we'll just vote on, on each team. So first up is finance subcommittee. Miren, I am assuming you still want to be on it?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
I will definitely put forward my name to continue to be on it.
Okay, I would love to be on it again. I think it's something I'm really passionate about. But we hopefully will have a third member. At least, and maybe somebody else wants on instead.
I've been thinking about policy, so I, I'll save myself for that one.
Okay. Megan, what do you? Megan, what do you think about being on? I think Lori's very, are you still very driven to stay with policy?
I just feel that, that with the history of policy, I should probably stay on there to have some continuity there. Even though our superintendent knows that I don't always love it. And I'm not going to attack that book going back into the eighties like Shannon does, so. But I will deal with new policies.
Okay, Megan, are you interested in finance?
Sure, I'm happy to join finance.
Okay, so. Miren?
No, I'm just, I'm just wondering, thinking, and maybe now saying out loud, you know, I mean, with Shannon's current absence, do we feel like the priority should be to continue with and have three members, three current members? We can always revisit this, right? When Shannon returned. So would it make more sense for us to have three members on finance or three members on policy at this point?
So here was, here's my feeling, and it, it really is up to the committee. I think Shannon was very driven to change a lot of stuff and work on it, and she was great at what she did. But I also think she made a lot of headway already. And that with policy, we don't have this urgent need to change something very quickly. I think she left us in really good shape. Tell me if I'm wrong, but that is my sense. Whereas with finance, we're coming up on budget season really quickly. And I really think that it's important that we have a strong subcommittee so that we can work on the budget and stay on that timeline. My sense is that we can limp along with a smaller policy subcommittee. But my own preference is I would like three for the, the finance subcommittee. If everybody feels differently, that's totally fine.
And I. Is it something we can move? Like, you know, in a couple of months, if we see that it's not balanced, we find out what's going on with Shannon, whatever, we can move that, right?
Sue, can you unmute and or give us a thumbs up? I think we can change that if we need to.
Yes, she said she can't, she can't get her audio.
She can't unmute, but she, she. Okay, good. She texted, yeah. So I was, yeah, I mean, I think we have a lot of flexibility, and this is an unusual year. And, you know, I'm just hoping Shannon comes back soon. But let her take as much time as she needs, and I know that's her love, so.
She loves it. She, she does so well with it.
To me, she's on policy right now, you know? So just be channeling it as you all meet. So I don't know, does everybody think we should need three for some, for finance or three for policy? I'm really interested in knowing what you all think.
I think we should ask our newest members where they really want to be, and then they could move between that. And I should mention that one thing that we are working on, and, and we can thank Sue, is having everything in a digital format. Like, it was so archaic with those old smoky binders. So we have made a lot of headway with that. And I mean, there are certain policies that, that have to be done because they are important for what's going on in our schools right now. But there still are some very old policies in there that aren't urgent to look at right now.
Ben and Megan, you can unmute because, and Megan, you can too. There's a small enough number that it's okay.
As far as I have it. I'm, I'm definitely thinking of policy. Policy sounds good to me. Your reasoning sounds really good. Like, it seems like the more urgent immediate tasks are with the, the finance. So I'm, I'm happy to, you know, I think that sounds good. I'm happy to stay with policy or to get, to get on policy. But if you need someone else for finance, I'm also open to that too. I don't, like you said immediately the other day, like, don't take on too much. And I'm open to that. That also sounds really wise. So, yeah, like, I think what you're describing sounds, sounds smart to me. It sounds healthy.
So three for finance. So Megan, are you interested in finance?
Yeah, finance is great. I'm going to leave myself muted because the dog is downstairs. Patrolling, so. Yeah, finance is good for me.
So what it sounds like then is that we've got Megan, Cindy, yourself and myself for finance committee, and Lori and Ben, and already putting Shannon on finance and policy and moving forward with that. Do we need to make a formal?
Yeah, we should make a motion for each and a vote for each, and then I can check them off.
So I'll make a motion for the finance committee to be Cindy, Megan and myself. And as the previous chair, I will call a meeting for, well, email whoever gets on it to set that next meeting for next week.
I second that.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Ben?
And Hershey, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Lori?
Laura Garcia, I.
Mary Goldstein, I.
Cindy Krasinski, I. All right, policy should be easy now. Who wants to make that motion?
I'd like to make a motion that Ben and Shannon, can we, can we do that with Shannon if she's not sworn in yet, though? Sue, we can do that? Yeah, you're saying yes, okay. Okay, and I will be on policy committee.
All right.
I'll second that.
All right, Ben?
And Hershey, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Lori?
Laura Garcia, I.
Miren?
Mary Goldstein, I.
And Cindy Krasinski, I. Excellent. Okay, who wants to be on the collaborative and learn a lot about 32 sending districts? It really is interesting if you can do the trouble.
Send me to Greenfield. Send me to Greenfield. I'm ready.
You would like to do that, okay. Do we have a motion to elect Ben? Is anybody else interested in dying to do it? All right.
I'll nominate Ben for the collaborative board member then.
I second that.
Okay, Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Lori?
Laura Garcia, I.
Mary Goldstein, I.
Cindy Krasinski, I. See, now we're really moving. How about wellness committee?
I would still like to continue on as wellness. I just said, I, just because I like working with Division of Transportation and, but I, I think we have to mention that there is COVID response, which is separate.
So I'll nominate Lori for wellness committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Lori?
Laura Garcia, I.
Miren?
Mary Goldstein, I.
And Cindy Krasinski, I. All right, safety committee?
And so I've been on safety committee, and just to sort of clarify, I think in the rules there, that's primarily set up for the teachers' union to be the instigator or calling of those kind of meetings. And so for the most part, we have not met only once or twice since my term started on that, and it was really around mold issues and air quality issues at Whitewood, which thankfully will be shortly seeing the demolition ball. So I don't foresee a whole lot of need for it, but as certainly willing to continue to do that for whenever it is brought up.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to nominate Miren to safety committee.
All right. Okay, Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Lori?
Laura Garcia, I.
Mary Goldstein, I.
Cindy Krasinski, I. Excellent. So now we have school building committee member. So Miren, Shannon and I were on it. We're almost at the end, so I would really like to continue, and I am assuming that Miren would like to continue with that. Just so that we're at the end with just very few meetings because, but it will be the tearing down and finishing of the whole piece. So for myself, I would really like it. Miren's nodding his head. He would like to stay on. Shannon has that position. I don't do, I'm wondering if we need, Allison, you might want to unmute and weigh in on this. Do we need a third member while she's not there? Or are we, no, we could just go with two. Okay. So I don't know if anybody else is dying to do that, or if someone wants to make a motion to keep Miren and I on the school building committee.
And those meetings are all open to the public. Anyone on the committee can attend.
Yep.
So should I tell people that are concerned about what's happening to the materials in Whitebrook now to go to those meetings and weigh in? Like faculty have contacted me, and it's something I wanted to put on other today. Yeah.
We can talk about it during the other.
Sure. Well, we don't have another, but we can have another. You know, we can, we can talk with each other. We just can't make any real big decisions on anything, but we can certainly toss out things we'd like on the agenda later on or whatever. So yes, I think that people should go to the school committee, school building committee meetings. They're remote, so they're easy to get on the link and, you know, tune in and, and be a part of it and ask questions. They can also contact us. Do we have a motion to have Miren and I continue as school building committee needed members?
I make a motion to have. I make a motion to have you two continue to be School Building Committee members.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Ben.
Ben Hersey, I.
Megan.
Megan Harvey, I.
Laurie.
Laurie Garcia, I.
Maren.
Barry Goldstein, I.
And Cindy Krasinski, I. Now, um, on, there is no COVID response piece on the agenda. And what I'm wondering is it really wasn't a voted on position so much as we want to make sure that a school committee member is there. So Sue, tell me if I'm wrong, but my belief is that we can continue as is, or we could swap for a new member to be a part of that. And that is totally, I think, something that does not require a vote. Sue, can you weigh in and tell us yes or no? Am I crazy and we have to vote and put it on the agenda?
It doesn't know. But I I think that our past practice has been, and I'm thinking of not COVID necessarily, Cindy, but I'm thinking of, I think, the last time we had an election. And you voted for members to sit on the Equity Committee. And I'm thinking it's kind of like that as a as a school committee can have any subcommittees. They can serve on any sub subcommittees that they are committed to. So I was going to, I think the COVID Response Committee and the Equity Committees are two other committees that you should ask about membership on. And at some point, one or both may cease to exist, you know, and that will, yeah, that will be the end of that. And maybe it'll be replaced by something else.
Yeah, so that was my sense is that we can be pretty flexible. I know Maren and Shannon served on the Equity Committee. And I I don't think it requires a vote. I'm assuming you still want to be on that part, Erin.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's open for conversation, so.
Um, there are a lot of issues that have been brought up in the city in the past year on social media that I think maybe it would be helpful for me to join Equity as well.
I've attended a lot of Equity meetings, but I don't know. It seems like only so many of us can be there.
I would say two, two per meeting is good, just because we're so tiny right now. Normally, I would say three.
I think in the, I think in the past, and Maren, correct me if I'm wrong. I think we've had a representative from the school committee on the nine twelve and a representative on the pre-K through eight from school committee.
That is correct. And the Equity Committee has sort of shifted gears, though, for the rest of this year. So it's a little, I don't think it quite fits that split, though. So I do think that that's, and I don't think it necessarily has to be fully discussed now, but I think it is something that we want to, you know, maybe want to revisit how we're being represented on that group and engaging that conversation.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm I'm totally comfortable with two people being a part of Equity and two people being a part of COVID response or one person. But at least the school committee has always felt, and I'm assuming continues to feel, but we can certainly, correct me if I'm wrong, that there should be a school committee member on the COVID response team. So, okay, so we would like to continue that.
Yes, I I really want to just say again that I think that Dr. Megan Harvey is the person to be on the COVID Response Team. And we are thankful as city members, not only school committee members, for her diligent work she does weekly to provide us with the updates. So thank you, Megan, for doing that.
So Megan, are you interested in being a part of that COVID response?
Yeah, yeah, I'd love to.
We kind of thought you all would, you would.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
But they have to revisit when the meetings are because I don't think Megan could attend on Tuesday at 2:15 either. Am I, or did your schedule change, Megan?
The schedule changed.
Okay.
Yeah. I can look at that too, please. So I'll loop in with Dr. Leclair.
Okay. Yeah. Go ahead.
Well, I was gonna, if we're done with that, then I think we can look at the Equity Committee. And if it sounds like Lori and Ben, you've been previously working on that too, if the two of you want to sort of take that on, I'm certainly willing to give space for somebody to do that, so.
It works for me. I'm I'm, it's, I've been very kind of dedicated to the question of equity, so I'm 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 happy to be in there.
And I I'm happy to also do it, but I also want to say that when Shannon does come back, I know that she was passionate about her work on that committee. And I'm happy to move aside. There are just some things that have to be brought up, especially regarding the school calendar. So I I just believe that's part of Equity, so.
Well, I don't want to speak for Shannon, but I think she would be very happy to have people step up and step in until she gets back. And I think with this school committee, we're all willing and hopeful that she'll come back soon and willing to regroup and shuffle anything that we want to shuffle.
Agreed.
Great. Okay, so we really don't need a vote for that, but we've settled that. So COVID Response Team will be Megan Harvey and Lori and Ben will be on Equity. And now we're going to open this meeting up to public speak. If if there's anyone who would like to talk, please limit it to three minutes. And please state who you are and your name, you know, and your relation in to East Hampton and your concerns and signal now. Anybody for public speak? Going once, going twice. All right, I do not see anybody, so I am going to close public speak and we will go on with the meeting schedule. We need to approve the 2022 meeting schedule? Dr. Leclair, Sue. Anything to say about it?
I don't know if Sue's still in office. Who is asking me to relate to you that it's the same schedule in as previous years? So same start time, same calendar schedule of two meetings per month. And if this committee wants to change something around start times or days of the week, this is when you would open the floor and have that discussion. Otherwise, you would vote to keep the calendar moving along in the same manner.
Does anybody have any concerns about the current schedule?
I think I just want to ask the parents who are on the committee now, the timing that's best for them. Because I know when we've, when I first joined, I believe our meeting time was at 6:30. And then it went to six. Like, I just feel that parents should say when it's best for them to be able to feed their families. So they should know that the meeting time is open to decision. It hasn't always been six.
It's a little bit tricky, but it's the kind of thing that, like, you know, we've been, my family has been sort of living with for quite a while and plant and and it's kind of built into the the schedule of life. So it's not a problem to say, you know, twice a month or once a month or whatever it is. You know, we're gonna, I'll be out of action for a while.
Megan, is six in fact, is six fine with you?
Yeah, six is fine. I did want to ask, is this when we, or is this related to a discussion about like when we would move back to in-person meetings? Is that slated at some point or we're just waiting to see what the data? Yeah. So zoom until further notice.
Correct.
We did think we were closer to moving back into.
Yeah, that was a long time ago, but it got shot down.
Yeah, that's a good question about the structure of the meetings, like in terms of how they're, they're always the same. Is that a unchangeable entity? I mean, is that something that we could talk about or I'm curious about that?
Yeah, it can be shifted. Yep. I think that's just how it's been done here, but the can be, can be moved around. I mean, there are some things that you have to do, you have to do, you know, public speak, you know. There are, there are rules about what you have to have, but the schedule of how you do it can be switched around.
Okay, I'm I'm not sure I have a concrete sort of, you know, suggestion for how to change it or what or or what it should look like. But for instance, I sometimes think that public speak might be better served later in the meeting to let people respond to things that are going on. But I am open to that too. We can talk about that. I don't know. Is that something you could bring up later? Is that we, like, you know, should it come up?
I think the challenge with it is just that it's, do you want people to be able to give comment before we have it? Discuss the topic because we're going to vote on the topic, right? So you generally want to have people to be able to give their opinion before we're taking votes. But maybe depending on what the topic is, sometimes there's a way to have us have the conversation, not have a vote yet, then offer public speak on that piece. Again, we can't respond to anybody thing, but and then have a vote. There, that's, that's the only real piece to that could be adjusted because you don't want otherwise have people have public comment after we've already taken a vote on something. Because then it's just going to be griping that we've made the wrong vote or we made the right vote and good for you. Like, it's not so that there's a way to maybe sort of shift it a little bit, but not a whole lot in a certain way.
And the purpose of having public speak beforehand really is there's an agenda that people look at and they know what we're going to be voting on. So, you know, it's really their chance before we talk to let us know what they're thinking and feeling about the upcoming agenda. So that's why we usually put it beforehand. You also don't want people to have to wait through an entire meeting or, you know, a long part of a meeting before they get to talk.
Also, just let me know that reminded me that there is a public speak policy. So if you wanted to adjust that, that would be a policy issue.
I bet a look in that binder now that Shannon telling me.
I wonder, I don't know how long this part is each meeting. I haven't specifically like noted this as as I've been watching, but could we do some of like the payroll and accounts payable stuff before public speak? I think what happens, what from my perspective, what happens sometimes is that we like start right at six and then no one's here. And then they start logging it. They're like, oh, someone text someone else, there's a meeting going on on or it gets posted on Facebook or whatever. And so we miss a lot of people who I think would say something, maybe. So if we could do like a couple of things that are shorter and then do public speak before we do any of the voting, the discussion and stuff, I don't know if that seems reasonable.
So Oh, sorry, go Dr. Leclair.
I was just going to say that Sue and I could play with some agendas and maybe run it by the chair and see where we land with that.
And I was going to say the reverse of that is the people who just want to speak and they don't want to have to hear. Sometimes those other items take a while. And the other, the people would be frustrated to like, I don't want to hear this. So there really is a flip side.
Yeah. So it's, it's, yeah, I mean, it's something you can try to tweak and work on, but I agree, I think a lot of people don't want to stay for our final minutes and run through crazy things. If I was going to see anything else, I would probably put other before we do all the minutes and payroll. Because that way, before people tune out, they could hear what's on our mind about other issues and what might be coming up in the future. So that would be the suggestion I would have.
Yeah, I like that.
Is it possible to have more than one public speak? That that might be open in the can of worms, but I'm curious, like, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think
Your policy, that's a policy issue as well.
Okay.
Yeah, unless you change that. Okay, so we're going to move other to before the the final matters. Okay. So let's have a motion to approve the schedule as is right now, meeting schedule with the start time of six o'clock in the meetings as listed already.
I'll make a motion to keep the meeting schedule as is.
Do we have a second? Okay, Maren, thank you. And let's do a roll call, Ben.
Ben Hersey, I.
Megan. Megan Harvey, I.
Laurie.
Laurie Garcia, I.
Erin. I didn't hear you somehow you, did you freeze? Try it again, just.
Aaron Goldstein, I.
Gotcha, okay. And Cindy Krasinski, I. Okay, um, St. Patty's Day Parade, this does not take a vote. We, we in years past have marched. And I was really proud of us when we could get quite a few of us to turn out. I'm hoping that in March, things will be great. But Sue needs to know if any or all of us are interested in marching as our school committee. You can back out if you happen to get sick or the world turns crazy and COVID is driving us nuts. But we can sign up and let Sue know that we formally right now are intending to march. I would like to march in March if the world stays fairly stable. I intend to be at the parade marching. Anybody else? Laurie? Megan? Ben? All right, and Maren, yes or no? Okay, so right now we are, Sue, we are accepting Lori, Ben, Megan and Cindy to march. It is a fun event. And I think it's really nice to to show our community spirit. So let's cross our fingers that we get to do it. All right. We have our secretary. But I bet you you don't have the printed agenda. Move to approve the payroll. So why, do you have it in front of you?
I do. I have the electronic version right here.
Good.
Then you
I knew you were the perfect choice for this. See, then you take over six, seven and eight. The ball's in your court.
Do I just read these? Do I just say?
You make a motion, make a motion to
Move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 12/16/2021 in the amount of, oh, gosh,
I'll second that.
Okay, Ben.
And her see, I.
Megan. You froze. Come back to, oh, there you are.
Megan Harvey, I.
Laurie.
Laurie Garcia, I.
Maren. And Cindy Krasinski, I.
Okay, I'd like to move to approve school payroll dated 12/16/2021 in the amount of $689,379.87.
I'll second that.
Okay, Ben.
And her see, I.
Megan.
Megan Harvey, I.
Laurie.
Laurie Garcia, I.
Cindy Krasinski, I.
And is this another motion here, this budget transfer? Are these all motions? Okay, like to move for a budget transfer request of 49,160 from speech pathologist to school adjustment counselor center for Center in Pepin.
I second that.
Okay, Ben.
And her see, I.
Megan.
Megan Harvey, I.
Laurie.
Laurie Garcia, I.
Maren. And Cindy Krasinski, I. Okay, so I'm going to take a roll call vote to move into executive session. We will adjourn from executive session, so the public will have to step out. And Laurie?
Were we going to do a quick other?
You're right, you're right. Thank you for the catch. Okay, um, so it's not really another, but it is a chance before we move very, thank you very much to just tell us what you would like to, you know, what's on your mind that you would like us to think about for future meetings.
There's, there's a lot
There's, there's a lot of community concern about what is happening with some of the surplus items. And we all know what social media can do. And, um, I know things have been put on the auction block and it's very hard to move things. And I know people are trying, but somebody called me and they were just, the, the main concern right now that I heard are brand new tables that were purchased for, um, the grandparents' luncheons. And they're like two years old and they're afraid those are gonna get scrapped. And also piles of books that were marked to keep and donate. And people who love books are afraid that those books won't get into the right hands and will go into recycling. So I, there are other objects, but someone was gonna send me a list, but it's another. And it's just people are so concerned because also I think there's a misconception that the building's gonna be demolished right away, which I heard it isn't going to be. So there is time to get rid of this stuff in a proper way. Dr. Leclerc, no, there isn't a way. Dr. Leclerc.
Um, I'd like to see a list because I think, I, I think that there's a lot of misinformation floating around. And I think that the people that are giving information don't have anything to do with the schools. And so.
No, this was a, I agree with you. That's why I said, I'm not talking about this from social media, which I never respond to. I don't do that. But this was a call from somebody on our staff. And I told this person, because I totally agree with what you're saying, there's a lot of hearsay. I said, I cannot just say a lot of stuff is getting scrapped because that's not specific. But I was told the tables and the books. So.
Those, those two items have never even been brought to my attention. So I'm wondering why that person didn't go to the administration, which is really the next place that they should go and ask the question.
And that's why there's, but there's just panic that things are gonna be demolished this week. And that's why, is there a date when it's?
Well, the building is no longer in our possession. It was a quick turnaround. The electricity has already been turned off. What I will say and what has been, um, relayed to, um, members of our school building committee is that we worked with the city. There, there are guidelines to follow when you are, um, repurposing anything or when you're salvaging anything. And the, we abide by the city guidelines. And so anything that was over five hundred dollars or had a useful life expectancy over five years, which is what the city guidelines are. Michael Owens, who works for the city of East Hampton, who's the chief procurement officer, went through the building months ago and took any of the materials or identified materials that were going to go to the city for repurposing or for sale, um, either on their website now or at a later time, once the elementary schools, um, are closed. He went through and did all that, being very, the city has been on top of this. Michael Owens is part of our school building committee. Um, so he's been taking care of it. What I will say is a person not affiliated with the school made a post on Facebook that I don't know where they got their information. And I frankly think that they were irresponsible and vindictive. Um, you know, they put a post on there after the first day of moving. We had two full days of moving last week. So yes, there were still things at the end of the first day of moving, as you would expect, because we moved for two days. And then the teachers were in and out of that building all week long, getting personal items out of the building. Um, you know, throwing things away, going through things. The teachers in that building have also been purging for the last few years. And, um, you know, what is left in that building were things that were so old. And I'll give you one example. Someone on Facebook said paper was left in the school.
I read that.
And the principal adamantly said, yes, paper was left in the school. Paper that is so old and warped and discolored that when you picked it up with your hands, it disintegrated in your hands. So yes, paper was left in the building. But if you don't know the whole story, you're missing.
Of cour-, of course. And that's why I said to you, I said to this person who has been on the staff for many years, I don't believe any of that because I'm a teacher in another district. There's a paper shortage. There would not be paper that was usable. I was thinking maybe it belonged to the old printers with the holes on the sides. I was like, I am sure that it is not worthy paper of saving. But I did say, we can't have these like hearsay items. We need to know specifics of items that should be kept. And that's why. And then the person was like, but I can't go back in and take pictures now. I said, well, just ask your colleagues exact details of what should be kept. And these tables supposedly are two years old, Dr. Leclerc, and there was a fundraiser to purchase them. So they're really concerned about these tables that I believe are rounds that were used for the grandparents' day that, and, and somebody said that somebody in town actually could use the tables. So, and then the books that were, some books were marked to recycle and then other books were books that were still good books, but they weren't used in the district. And I know before they used to have like book drives to send books to Africa, for example. I said, there's a pandemic now. Nothing can even move that's new. So I understand that all the problems with that, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Well, I would say that, um, besides following the city guidelines, you know, we had a very quick turnaround on this building. Teachers were in the building until the twenty-third of December. Moving day was Monday and Tuesday last week, and we turned the building over to the construction team, um, at the end of last week. So there was no time to, you know, do a lot of work inside that building. You had two weekends that were holiday weekends.
Yeah.
There was very little time. Uh, for the items that were identified to not meet the city of East Hampton threshold, some of those items were donated to other neighboring school districts, um, that were in need of materials. And some of them were, um, given to people in need. Um, and that was done over the course of the last few months when possible. Uh, we have, um, materials that are very outdated and, and there are some items that will be purged as part of the purging process.
Can you restart, respond though about those tables?
So that person.
But is it too late? Is it too late to get those?
No, I mean, I walked through that building last week. I didn't see those tables there. So I will ask, I think that that person, again, if they were in there last Monday, when we were only halfway done with the moving, then maybe yes, the tables were there. But, um, you know, we still have multiple other schools in the building, in the district. And so anything that was halfway decent kind of gets spread out to other schools as well in the district.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And not one parent emailed me about that, any of those issues, not one parent or staff.
I don't know why the staff just doesn't reach out.
I don't either.
But, okay. That is an important message that I think from time to time, we need to let people know. Really, the order of speaking to people really should be to start with, if you have a problem with the teacher, you speak to the teacher. If you do not like that answer, or you have a problem that you need a principal for, you go to the principal. Then if you are still unhappy or still have questions, then you go to the superintendent. And last, if you feel as though nothing is being addressed or you are not happy with that, then you go to the school committee. I think it's a very frequent tendency to just go straight to the school committee. And part of our obligation is to remind people to start with the correct steps. So teacher, principal, superintendent, school committee, the last. And I think every once in a while, we just need to remind the public during meetings. Um, and I certainly can do that every once in a while. Um, just remind people of the order that we should try to solve problems in. Okay, anything else that we wanna talk about before we go to executive session, Ben?
Just a quick one. I, I was wondering, Allison, if you could talk a little bit about, um, just the, it seems like January might be pretty wild with Omicron. And I'm just wondering what, um, the, the plan is for our, our schools that are already super short-staffed. And should we get to the place where Omicron kind of takes over and, you know, takes out some people? What are we, what are we looking at? Like, I know snow days are on the table and then, but I'm curious to think about if we get to five, six, seven, eight snow days, then where are we looking at like school vacations being canceled? Cause I know the end of the year is pretty tight for Maple, I think, and Center Pepin in terms of the turnaround there. They, they have to be out of those buildings. So I'm just wondering if you could lay that out a little bit, like what, what, what are we looking at?
Yeah, I'm putting together, um, a message for families today. My team is reviewing it. Make sure I didn't miss anything. But, um, we currently have, we have six staff out today on COVID for COVID reasons, spread out throughout the district. Um, every employee that came to work today tested this morning and we had zero positive cases at work today. Um, so we're really feeling good about that. We distributed all the KN ninety-five masks. We're not mandating them. We're, we're letting people know that if they have their own KN ninety-four or KN ninety-five masks that they prefer, they can use those. Um, but it is our expectation that people wear KN ninety-four, KN ninety-five mask um, to school. And, um, we have about nine thousand of those in the district right now. Uh, we were not going to do pool testing this week because we don't normally do pool testing on short weeks. But we made the decision last week to figure it out. And so all staff will do pool testing tomorrow on their PD day. Um, and so they'll be tested again. And then, um, students will undergo cool testing on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. I'm also asking in my letter for families to test their child before they send them to school with an at-home test. I'm also asking families to use, um, a KN ninety-four, KN ninety-five mask for their child when they send them to school. Um, and so what's on the table and what I'm relating to families is that if we do get to a point where our staffing gets incredibly, um, fragile and we have a lot of staff out, we probably will call a snow day in the district, which is just a traditional snow day. And just to give everyone a day to be at home, to rest and recover and take care of themselves. We have been advised by the Department of Education that we cannot have remote learning days this year with the exception of if we use all five of our traditional snow days, then if we need days beyond that, whether for a snowstorm or for COVID, we could do remote learning days. So, um, that would be something that we would consider at that time so that we don't tip the scale and go too far into the summer. Um, we're trying to work with the union on some, around some other challenges. But I think for the most part, what I would say is that we have an extremely highly vaccinated staff. They're at about ninety-five, ninety-six percent. Most of them are boosted. They're handing in their, we're still collecting booster information from staff. Um, so I sent them an email over the weekend to, you know, if they got things taken care of in the last couple of weeks to make sure they update their, uh, school nurses. So I don't have the current data on that. And our rates of vaccination for students are pretty high, mostly at the high school. Not so much for the five to twelve-year-olds yet, five to eleven-year-olds yet. But, um, we're still, again, asking families to share that information with us as they get it. And I'm hoping that in the last few weeks, the five to eleven-year-olds have really jumped up in their vaccination rates. Um, I also get that information on a weekly basis from the city health nurse who gives me that data. Um, it's a holiday on the city, um, city department. So I haven't gotten that data today, but they usually share that information with me, um, during the week. So I think that we're in pretty good, pretty good shape. I mean, our staff is, uh, today for PD, they're also having discussions around pulling back from, uh, small group reading and, you know, switching some of their, um, teaching strategies to go back to keeping kids more apart in the classroom that they, um, kind of relaxed a little bit, you know, at the beginning of the school year. So they're having those conversations, reminding them how to kind of make that shift again.
Ask, I, I, I'd actually a couple of follow-ups, but, um, if, if within one school, like same, I'm just thinking Maple, Maple, cause I'm familiar with Maple. But, uh, uh, if their staff situation gets, gets rough and they, when they had to close, it would, would they have a snow day separate from other buildings like?
Could do that. I mean, well, you know, on the unhappy other end of that is Maple teachers will have to go an extra day longer than the rest of the district. So.
Okay, right, right, right.
But doesn't work well on the other end.
Okay. Um, just the last thing, um, was about, uh, absences. And I, and I know that, um, Desi has a five-day uh, quarantine period. And I'm wondering like, if we have a student, say, who's, who has, gets exposed or gets COVID, is out for five days and then say on the fifth day, their sister gets it and they get exposed again. I don't know how this works exactly, but if, if a kid has to be out five days, ten days, how is that affecting their absence record? In terms of the, I know that there are like serious, like, I don't know, truancy repercussions. I'm just curious, like, are kids being penalized or punished for, for the, the, when they can't be in school because of COVID?
Hey, is if there's a medical reason for a student to be out, we, we try to work with the family around that. You know, we have, uh, mechanisms that click into place for a long-term medical issue, whether it be COVID or, you know, cancer treatment or anything. We have mechanisms built into place. Um, it's the unexcused absences that'll really, um, kind of take a student into a hole. But a medically excused absence is not really going to be the, the troublesome spot for a student.
And, and anything related to COVID is medically excused?
Yes.
Okay, good to know.
I have some follow-up questions.
Go ahead.
Um, so I'm just thinking about this like snow day versus five days and if it's classroom versus school. So it could be school specific. Could it be classroom specific? Like what if we're staffed, but a, a teacher is out or a couple of classrooms are out or something like that?
So, um, what the scenario I can talk to you about is, um, we've been told if there's an extremely high number in a classroom, whether that be the teacher or the students or whatever, and you felt the need to close the classroom. We have, um, a hotline at the Department of Ed. We have to go through the Department of Ed and get permission to close that classroom and keep the rest of the school open. But we could do, um, a remote day for the students and staff in that classroom.
Okay.
Answer your question.
It does. And I think my follow-up to that is sort of like, is there a reason that we would expect that to just be one day versus for it to be five?
Just, it could be longer. We could, you know, there are some communities across the state that have closed a classroom for a period of time.
Yeah, that, that five-day isolation or whatever. I mean, if, if enough teachers are out, we're sort of, that's what we have to do, right?
We have to do that. Yep. Yep.
Yeah, not what we wanna do, but if, I think that seems like the way that we end up with classrooms closed is if there's staffing shortages.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, I was also gonna ask if there's, um, like a plan for more frequent, I don't know what the schedule is right now of COVID advisory meetings, but this is a situation that's probably gonna rapidly change for like the next four to six weeks and things are gonna get pretty dicey, I would expect. Um, so I don't, it seems like this is a good time for like weekly, um, sort of meeting and planning. I don't know what, what the active schedule is.
Absolutely do that. I think we could, you know, we could start that next week. Um, just because we need to get everyone on the schedule.
Right.
But yeah, we meet on Tuesdays normally, so we can, we can do that for the month of January and hopefully not longer than that. But we can, we can, um, react in real time to.
Yeah.
What's going on.
And certainly if we had to have an emergency school committee meeting outside of our, uh, regular schedule, we would do that based on, based on needs. The reality is we don't know what's gonna happen in the next few weeks and we just have to be ready to, to be flexible and to move. Lori? Uh, Dr. Leclerc, um, have you heard of other districts when they do have a teaching shortage? They put the kids in one like auditorium. Like what are your feelings about that? Cause I, I don't agree with that. I, I see Megan saying, no, no. But I know it is something that comes up and it's really bad to do that. So can we just say that from the start?
Um, well, you know, I don't wanna say never because, you know, if we're in a situation. Um, well, you know, I don't wanna say never because, you know, if we're in a situation, I think, um, I think sometimes we have to react in real time to what's in front of us. I'm trying to work with the union right now on utilizing some of the support staff in our buildings in a different, in a different manner. If, um, push comes to shove, you know, having them covering classrooms, which some of them do already, but not all of them do. And we don't utilize all of our, um, support staff that way. So, um, the union is open to discussing it. So it's something that I need to work on with them this week. We've just been in communication today about it. But, um, I think that it would be, it would be a last resort. I mean, I think that we have, um, administrators that would cover classrooms if they had to. Um, if we had to cancel special subjects, we would input, you know, I, specialist teachers in classrooms. If we, if we got to those kind of situations. Um, but yeah, it's, it's not ideal. And you know, the, the only thing I'll say is that, you know, fingers crossed, I think our, our staff is, is doing everything right that they can. So I think they're really, I think they're really trying. I, I am, I am astounded that I have six people out on COVID today, out of a staff of 275 people and everyone tested this morning and they're all okay this morning. Now I know that that mean, doesn't mean a lot. They could be, you know, positive tomorrow, but, um, I think that people have made some good choices. And hopefully those good choices over the holidays will continue on in school. And, and you know, if we keep our masks on and we do the right things, um, hopefully we'll be in better shape than a lot of other districts.
We are in better shape than my teaching district. So thank you once again for doing things the right way. I would like to mention though, and I'm sure Megan knows that the rapid tests are not really picking this up. I mean, a lot of people on this call know that, but what was astounding to learn yesterday that my daughter's, um, old roommate, who actually works for a PCR testing company in New York. She had COVID last year and she felt the symptoms again last week and she had three PCR tests. And they, while she had symptoms, Megan, you need to hear this, while she had symptoms, working in the lab and they kept on showing up negative. And when her sis, her symptoms started to decrease, she, because she's right there in the lab, did another PCR and it was positive. So this is a crazy, crazy variant. But, so the masking, I think, is what really is most important, even more than the testing.
There's rumors going around that the, some of the, the masks given out by the state were non-medical. And I was curious, I mean, this isn't necessarily like, you know, this is one of these rumors, but, but I'm, I'm hopeful that what we got is good to go and everybody's, you know, set.
Well, I think, you know, um, I think there are varying opinions. Um, I think the MTA had an opinion and I think the Department of Education had an opinion and I don't necessarily wanna get in the middle of either side. Why I said to our staff, really my feeling is, you know, i- i- it's important to wear a KN94 or, or KN95. I got these on Amazon a couple of weeks ago. I'm, I'm just using these because I have them at my house. You can, you don't trust the ones that I just handed out. You can definitely use your own. Um, and so I think that's, that's everyone's, um, choice. It's just important, I think, that people make the decision to use them. So.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah.
Is it possible to supply those for kids as well?
Um, I have, well, number one, we haven't, we haven't ordered them. I don't know where we would find them in the quantities we would need. I'd have to research that, um, with our business office. I mean, we have 9,000 KN95s for adults right now. Um, that'll get us through the next five or six weeks. So to get that quantity, I'm not sure. I don't even know where they get them.
I do know that, um, Amazon, uh, has child-sized KN95s. Um.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have one at home, so I haven't.
Right, right.
I, they definitely exist. I have them for my kids. I just didn't know. And, and maybe, you know, if we look at like what's in the budget and what we need to do. And maybe that's not the best use of the money, but that's something I, I wanted to ask about, like, if, if that's possible, to have a supply. And maybe we just keep them for like, if there starts to be a couple of cases, we start handing them out, you know, in, in the wake of that and then just continue after five days or something. I don't know, just trying to like come up with some ideas for. I think the goal has to be like, how do we get through January? Cause January is looking to be a nightmare. And the thing about Omicron is that, you know, with Delta, it was all about like, are we making good choices? And that will allow us to stay open. Like there are people who are doing everything right. Every single thing. They're distancing, they're wearing masks, they're hand, like, and they are still going to get this, even though they were boosted and that. So I think we just have to expect like, people are gonna drop at some point, just out for five days and then hopefully they'll be back. No worse for the wear, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I am a perfect example of that. I don't mind telling everybody. I have two HEPA filters, one I bought of my, with my own money in my room. I stay distant from my students. I wear two masks at school. I eat and drink in my car. Um, very lonely, very cold right now till my car heats up, but, uh, I do it to stay safe. And, uh, I had a student of mine test positive. And so I did a PCR test and lo and behold, I was positive. So, um, and I am boosted. So when I spoke to my doctors, they just said, this is a crazy variant. It's so contagious. And, um, I was lucky enough that because I'm boosted, I did really well with it and my family was able to do well. Um, but that is not necessarily the case for all boosted people. And then of course you have people who just have two. And then you have people who have not or one. And so I think we're just in for a rocky road for the next month or two. And we've got to be able to turn on a dime as we've done in the past and continue to talk to each other and talk to the community. And then I think we'll get through this. But it is, it is a crazy, I really thought I was doing apps. I, I can't think of another thing I could do. Um, and you know, still say, safe. So I was very grateful. I was okay with it. That was the power of boosting. So please boost if you can. So.
All right. Um, are we ready to, um, roll call into executive session? I thank people for coming and, uh, let's take a roll call. Let's move to executive session, Ben?
And her, see, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, I.
Mary.
And Cindy Krasinski, I. Um, we're going to move into executive session and we will adjourn from there. Thank you. Okay, so we need to drop. Um, Mary, do you wanna, wrong mouse. Do you want to drop off East Hampton Media? And I am going to make sure we're not recording. Look good.
Don't know.
How are we gonna do this? Let's see, remove.